Good evening. The March 19th, 2024 Board Meeting is now in order. I'd like to welcome my fellow Board Members and the public. It is so encouraging to see so many faces in the audience this evening. I'll politely ask the public to help our Board Meeting flow a little more smoothly by following a few housekeeping rules. The public's opportunity to address the Board is during the public comment portion of the meeting. I ask that the public refrain from speaking, loud disruptions, distractions, and other forms of communication that will hinder the business of the Board. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Wright?
Present.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
At this time, the Board would like to hold a moment of silence, and I invite the audience to join. Thank you. We are going to rise. We have a student here from Viera High, Max Maddle, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, you guys are in store for a treat because we have so many wonderful things that are happening in Rivard County. Tonight, we're going to honor several different individuals and students. I think our first demonstration that we have, though, is from the Viera High's Exercise, Science, and Dental Aid Center, or sorry, Career and Technical Education Program. You guys are going to come forward, correct? And you have a, you're going to show us something, right? Go ahead and come on forward.
Good evening, Chairman Wright, members of the Board, Dr. Rendell. I'd like to introduce you to Carrie Garrison. She is our Dental Aid Instructor at Viera High School, and Jackie Alinswitz, our Exercise Science, did I get it right?
I did.
Our Exercise Science Instructor at Viera. We are so pleased to have these students here under their leadership, and they're going to be describing what you're seeing as we're having the demonstration this evening.
Okay.
All right, so, good evening, Board and everyone. So, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to demonstrate both of our programs. We have a combination of our Exercise Science Level 3 students and Dental Aid students here, and we're going to demonstrate CPR and a rescue situation. So, just as a caveat, normally when the situation's happening, the victim would not be on a table, but for demonstration purposes, it does make it significantly easier, but we would have the victim on a hard, flat surface like the floor, so just, you know, putting that out there. But we're going to have our two students act out the scene and whatnot, and I will narrate as they go to give some context. And then we will have our two, other two students ready to field or answer any other questions that you may have. So, if you're all ready?
Thank you. All right. All right. Go ahead.
So, when there are two people there available for, at a rescue situation, it is most evident that you would send someone away in order to call 911 and go retrieve the AED. If this individual were alone, he would then have taken the time to call 911 himself so that he was not reliant on just himself in order to maintain the compressions. As you will notice, he will only be doing compressions for the CPR. From 2000, as of 2012, the American Heart Association has actually recommended compression-only CPR in situations that are not for infants, children, or in respiratory distress situations. And if the rescuer is either uncomfortable with providing breaths, or maybe is unsure of their ability to provide said breaths, so since we do not have a pocket mask device here, he is only going to engage in compression-only CPR. But as you can see, the second rescuer has now returned with the AED, so she will be able to help analyze for rhythm if a shock is needed and necessary. So, with that, now, as the compressor has continued with the AED pads on, it can begin to analyze for rhythm once the compressor ceases his compressions. So, the AED will now analyze for rhythm, and so it is recommending a shock, and so the second rescuer will indicate that all people should clear out of the way because, one, we don't want the AED to accidentally analyze an incorrect rhythm with both the compressor and the victim. We also don't want it to accidentally defibrillate when it needs to or when it doesn't need to. So, the AED indicates that a shock should be delivered, so the second rescuer will indicate that they should clear again, and then the shock is delivered, and now that the patient is stable and ready for transport, the second rescuer can begin putting the EKG electrodes on, so it can be monitored during a transport there. So, this demonstration here highlights several of the skills that these students learn in our programs. CPR, first aid, is something that they learn in their second year, and they get certified in, and the EKG is what they are currently learning now, and so they are learning how to take recordings of heart activity. EKGs do not defibrillate, they only record, but these students are able to analyze these heart rhythms and interpret them as such, and be able to identify whether someone is in cardiac distress or not. And so, what you're watching is really only just a couple weeks' worth of practice, and they are already more than proficient at the skill here. So, now that the victim is prepped for transport, you can transport them.
That's very convenient.
Yeah. It's a perfect-sized journey. Yeah.
Very nice, guys.
All right, thank you so much. This is funny that this is being presented because I think our Board, did we not have a discussion about this on getting trained? And so, I wanted to ask you a quick question, since I have the opportunity. The last time I used an AED machine, it prompted us verbally and says, so that AED machine does a thing?
It would as well.
Okay.
So, because it would be on a dummy, as well as because we wanted to transport them, that's why we elected not to turn it on.
Okay.
But that is the wonderful thing about an AED, is that it essentially is ironically dummy-proof.
Yeah.
Because anyone can operate it, and because it tells you exactly what to do. As long as you remember to turn it on, you have something there to assist you during whatever crisis you have.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you. Well, I'll give my fellow Board Members the time, if you would like to ask any additional questions or make any statements in regards to the display that you just saw.
So, thank you so much, guys, for this presentation. It's great to see what our students are learning. I know now it is state law, correct, that all of our high school students will learn CPR. So, not just in the CTE courses, but how are our students learning that outside of these specific courses? And maybe that's out of the scope of...
That might be. Go for it.
I can answer that. So, we actually certify them in BLS in our classes. Last year, on, at the Viera High School campus, we actually took students from every grade level. They came down, like, during lunchtime. We taught them compression-only, and that's as much as they learned. So, they're not actually certified, but if they need to do it, then they can do it.
Right. It's amazing, all these programs, so your dental students are learning this?
Yes.
And your sports science students are learning this? And I know at our other programs, our CNA students are learning this.
Yes.
We have so many CTE programs that are learning this, and I just have to testify, I've been in classrooms where we had students who saved people's lives because of the training they receive in these classes, even as a high school student who were already saving lives. So, thank you for what you do and providing such practical skills for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Actually, I'm glad Ms. Wright brought that up, because that's exactly what I was thinking when they said that you guys were coming and presenting this tonight. I thought, oh my God, are we doing a live training? But, you know, when we were having that conversation, I admitted it then, and I'm going to admit it still now, it hasn't changed. I've said, ever since my daughter was born, I kept saying that I was going to get CPR certified and learn the Heimlich and all of that, and she's seven and a half, and I still haven't done that, so.
Well, come on over.
This just, yeah, this just reminds me, you know, I need to, I need to get it over with, and I need to do it.
Yeah.
It's an impressive skill set, and like Ms. Campbell said, you know, we've had students here that we've honored for using these skills in the real world and saving people's lives. So, thank you. Thank you for all you do and for training all of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Susan?
I wanted to say thank you. I think it's ironic that Viera High School was able to give this presentation. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but Colin Sealy was one of the students years ago. Many people don't know this, but there was a hero, Tim Thomas, who's ROTC instructor, who, when Colin went down at Viera High School, they were calling for the AED, but they were hearing AD, so they thought they were talking about the athletic director. So, Tim Thomas pushed on that kid's chest for, like, eight, nine minutes, until they could bring that there to save him because of the confusion. And then on top of that, our ambulance that was supposed to come there to save him also took forever because they didn't know how to get to the back. So, literally, all of that was the reason that we then went with Sean Seema and who we play for and everybody else to the state Capitol to fight to have CPR required for the whole state. So, the three of us went up there, we ran around hotel rooms and everything else, and it's just ironic that you guys came here to do this today, and I'm so proud that you're doing it, because just like my fellow Board Member said, there is a definite need for this across the county, and lives are saved just because somebody keeps those chest compressions going. And that is just something, it's something that everybody needs, and I really appreciate you guys coming. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to show us, because right now, everybody in this room that is not certified is saying, I better go get certified. So, there's a big deal right now that you guys are here. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And if you haven't been certified, please go do it.
Yeah.
You're going to have that moment where you wish you did, and you may not want that. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Trent?
Well, not a lot to add after all of you guys, but exactly the same. Thank you so much for shining a light on what's needed. Young people, thank you for taking the initiative to, you know, to get this talent. Like you said, you know, there's still some of us that are no longer the youth of you that are saying, we should probably get CPR certified, as some of us were because we were coaches before, but there's a lot of people out there that need the talent that you already have. So, thank you, and thank you for being that example.
Yeah, I'm going to echo the sentiments of my fellow Board Members. It is such an important skill and really an easy one to master. Honestly, once you learn it, you're going, oh my gosh, this is like riding a bike, and honestly, you will know it for the rest of your life, and it will save a life. It could potentially save many lives. So, thank you to the instructors for all the hard work that you're doing there on teaching these students. I still want to challenge our Board, we made this comment before, that we all need to be CPR certified. I, mine is expired, I will admit, but I think it would be a good lesson for us to all walk through, so we might reach out to you and see if we can come over there and schedule something.
We would love it.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you guys so much. Dr. Rendell, do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything else to add. I didn't know if you wanted to do a picture before we do the next thing, so.
Okay, we'll take a...
I have something special for Mr. Susan.
Yep, we will, we will take a short recess real fast and take a picture, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. I don't think he officially recessed. Okay. Mike, are you good back there? Okay, I'm good. I'm back on. All right. All right, thank you. I am going to offer my fellow Board Members and Dr. Rendell an opportunity to recognize students, staff, and members of the community. Board, I will remind you, we have several different recognitions we're doing tonight, so hopefully they don't overlap, but if anybody would like to jump out first and go?
Go, go, go. We got to go out of order. So, our Rivard Achievement Center hosted the annual art festival at the zoo for our ESE students across the district, all age groups. It was a fantastic event, as always, and very much appreciate the work that they do and all the sponsors, the students from EFSC, and a lot of other people. Even had an instrument petting zoo, where kids could come and get their hands on violins and banjos and guitars. It was so much fun. So, thank you, Rivard Achievement Center, for your support of our students and all the people at the district, especially in Student Services who volunteered and helped put on and organize that event. It was, it was a huge event from the beginning to end, and if you got, if you were in the zoo that week, our students' artwork was hanging all over the place. And then, I wanted to thank, we thanked them on social media, but I just want to publicly thank in our Board Meeting, the Boeing Corporation for their $250,000 check that they presented to the Rivard Schools Foundation in support of Destination Mars, the event that's been going on all month long and will finish up this week. It's a huge gift, and it really is supporting STEM in our schools, in our elementary schools, as they're looking at what it's like to live on Mars, what it would be like, what are we going to need once we get there. And so, very much appreciate the Boeing Corporation and the Rivard Schools Foundation for help facilitating that.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, so, I'm going to jump off of that Destination Mars. I just want to give a huge shout-out to Amanda Howell for orchestrating all of that and taking that on. It is no easy feat. It was... It was so fun joining them again this year. I didn't get to do every day like I wanted to, but I always have a blast. The day that I got to go there was particularly special just because of the particular schools that we had that were winning. So, hats off to the kiddos at Challenger 7, who did a fantastic job that day. And I hear there's a rumor that next year, they're not going to Mars, they're going somewhere else. So, it's pretty exciting. I also had an opportunity to participate as a judge with the Junior Achievement Social Innovation Challenge, which is also super fun. Thank you to JA, not only for coming into our classrooms, but the volunteers who sponsor those students and those teachers, to offer this unique and amazing opportunity to our kids. This is the coolest thing in the world. It's kind of like a Shark Tank challenge for our kids to come up with products, have to stand in front of a group of professionals and present those products to us. It was pretty incredible, and one of the winners from the room that I was in created a home device to guard a, your security networks with their own VPN. So, I mean, these things are like light-years ahead of what you're happening right now, and pretty impressive kiddos. Thank you to the Space Coast Association of Realtors, again, for hosting Project Prom. It was my first time ever being there. I know Ms. Wright was there for, I think, the entire day. It was so fun. It was so wonderful to see families come in and get their attire for free for prom, but there was one family that came in that the dad had shared a tragic story. Someone had sent him the information, they showed up that day, and he had no idea that it was even going to be free, and he kind of broke down to the staff there. So, incredible opportunity for our students and our families, so thank you for everyone who's involved in that. Just want to say a reminder that your annual re-enrollment has started yesterday, and it's online. Yay! No more paper packets! So, make sure you get on there and do that. That helps our administrators plan for the next year, so try to do it as soon as you can. We appreciate that. Destination kindergarten events, they are starting April 6, from 9:00 AM to 1:00, will be held at Max Rhodes Park, and there will be one, I believe, two weeks after that in Titusville. I don't think the destination is officially announced yet, though, so keep your eye out for that. And then, last but not least, I did get to go on a couple of school tours with Dr. Rendell, and I just want to give a special shout-out to one teacher at Port Malabar Elementary in her VEB classroom, Ms. Ramby. I had the opportunity of meeting her last year, actually not meeting her, being in her classroom and subbing, but going back there and meeting her was incredible. That is a teacher who lives, breathes, dies for her kiddos. It's the most beautiful classroom. It is so fun, and she pours every single ounce of her heart into those kids, so thank you, Ms. Ramby, for letting us come join you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Mr. Susan?
I want to say thank you to everybody here. I see a lot of familiar faces, all the way from the wrestling and the satellite, you know what I mean, automotive and some of the other stuff here. I want to say thank you also to those of you guys that have done some great audits. I see some great principals and great people in the audience. I want to say thank you to Roy Allen, Ralph Williams, and Harbor City Elementary Schools for having me visit over the past couple of weeks. It's been a very good meeting, discussing all the things, all the way from healthcare to permission slips to MTSS and all the other issues that we have going on inside the district to make sure that we're in line in fixing the problems we have. I also wanted to say thank you to Boeing, Space Florida, Microsoft, Lockheed Martin, SpaceX, Miami Dade Schools, Citrus County Schools, and others that were a part of the Career and Technical Workforce Program out at Kennedy Space Center last week. Many of you may not have known, but we called a large workforce. We are falling behind Texas, Alabama, and California in competition for jobs for the Space Force, and the problem we have is, is that our, we don't have enough workers to fill the positions for the companies that are coming. So, we created a workforce summit, we're calling it Space Force Workforce, and what it is, is to draw all of the kids from across the state of Florida to challenge those other states, to say that we can lead, because whoever starts really launching, as they start ramping up, will be the teams that, when we talk about doing Mars rovers and everything else, we will be the center of the entire universe for space exploration. We want to continue to do that, and we can only do that if we have enough workers. I wanted to also say thank you to Ms. Rutledge for her hard work with our 4H. Many of you don't know, but we're bringing agriculture back into the classrooms. And right now, Romalia Farms and Ms. Torlak have stepped up to create systems where students who want to be involved in 4H-style agricultural programs would be able to go to those farms. I talked to them today on the phone. They're excited to facilitate for next year. So, bringing all that ag back in, Ms. Rutledge, and spending the time on the phone with me today and some of those other partners is a great opportunity. I wanted to say thank you, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mr. Trent?
All right, I'll make this quick, just like Mr. Susan. I can't wait to get through these recognitions for everyone sitting out there. It's going to be a wonderful evening. You guys are well-deserved of all the recognition you're going to get. I, too, had a pleasure of visiting a few schools with Dr. Rendell, and even one with Mr. Susan here, but Williams Elementary and McNair Magnet. Dr. Richardson over there at McNair's is, he's on top of things. We went and witnessed classroom after classroom. It was ran well, well-managed. We saw music and math and, I mean, making pizzas and reading, all within an hour and a half, and the kids were engaged. That's what we're looking for, is engaged students. And even in the passing of the hallways, the respect that the students gave the staff and Dr. Richardson, so he's doing a great job over there.
Mr. Trent, just to clarify, we didn't see pizza-making in the math classroom.
Yes, you were upset about that, I could tell.
We saw pizza-making in the culinary classroom.
Oh, oh.
Correct. Not in the math classroom.
No, we saw math, we saw music, we saw reading.
We went to math, and then we saw pizza-making. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, we didn't see pizza-making in the math classroom.
However...
However, we did drink tea in the social studies room.
We did, we did drink tea in the social studies room.
We did drink tea.
But there was a lot of math in that, and that dough was resting. Dr. Rendell wanted that pizza right away. We had to teach him that it was, had to rest for a day before you can use the dough, so we got that straightened out. But again, we've encouraged each Board Member to go outside your district and visit a school, so I joined, and we went down and looked at Williams Elementary. And Ms. Schroeder, it is a, it's a pleasure to see an administrator that has, you know, such a grasp of her school, and she, this is her first year there, isn't it not? I think it is.
Correct.
So, she's a wonderful fit, and a lot of good things happening there. Ms. Hahn, if you're, if you're here, if you're not here, you're back working. Your work is, is well-accepted at that elementary school, the new flooring that's going in there, and the new carpet and laminate. The place is looking great, and the kids are loving it, so excited to get going tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. All right, I'm going to try to write mine up really quickly. One of the disadvantages to going to last is that you have attended a lot of these same events that my fellow Board Members have. So, Destination Mars was obviously a... So, Destination Mars was obviously a very, a big highlight for me. It was so much fun watching these students just on the spot, problem-solve and code and chain. I'm going, oh my gosh, I cannot believe that these elementary-age students are doing this. So, thank you so much to Ms. Howell for putting that on and inviting us to come be a part of it. I also had the opportunity to attend MPA, and that was an absolute, just a blessing, it really was. So, watching these students get up there and make joyful noise and sing, and then also hearing from other people in other counties that come to judge our students, and really recognizing the fact that our district has put so much emphasis and focus and attention towards the arts. So, that was a really, really neat thing for me to see and hear from other counties on what they're doing or what they may not be doing, and what they love that we're doing. So, thank you so much to all those teachers. Mr. AV at Space Coast, you were running around. I think you probably worked 16 hours that day, if I were guessing. I also got the opportunity to attend the parent leadership meeting, which was another really fun thing that happens on a monthly basis. So, there's parent liaisons at each one of our schools that have the opportunity to come here at the district and really hear what's going on, and then they get to talk to us and tell us some of the things that maybe they could, they could provide some insight into ways we could help their school site. So, this particular parent leadership meeting had the sheriff present, and Junie, and so thank you to the sheriff coming here and talking about school safety and how we're keeping our schools safe. There's no greater job, I think, than making sure our kiddos are safe every single day. I, too, attended Project Prom. Ms. Jenkins, I didn't get to meet the parent that you met, but you and I were, I think you were standing there with the young lady that tried on a dress, and she came out, and this dress was made for her, and it was just absolutely magical, and it's that moment of, ah, the dress! But then she finds the pockets in the dress, and she's like jumping up and down, and we're like, oh my gosh, we're laughing, but what a huge success that event is. And so, want to find out a way that we can partner with them next year, because that event is just tremendous. And what the Space Coast Association of Realtors does is, it's nothing short of really a miracle. So, and then also, today's election day, and so, one of those fun things that happens is that we have polling sites at some of our schools, and I want to commend those schools, because that's a lot of shuffling that happens whenever you have to take an entire area of your school and shut it off now and open it up for Supervisor of Elections to come in and set up a polling location. So, thank you to our Supervisor of Elections, to our school sites that are hosting some of those, and to all the poll workers and watchers. We appreciate you, we see you, we recognize your importance. So, we will, I'll wrap up my recognition. So, at this time, we have several staff members and students who we're gonna recognize tonight for their dedication and their accomplishments. First, we have two instructional assistants who've been praised by their colleagues. Ms. Maggie Potter, are you here? Okay, all right. So, Ms. Maggie is a IA from Central Middle School. She's gonna come forward with one of our transportation specialists, our driver, David Eli, who wrote a magnificent letter. Okay, all right, come on. Did you bring the letter? Do you have the letter that you're gonna read? You do, okay. All right, go ahead. So, you wanted to open him up, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I just want to introduce David. Dr. Rendell, thank you guys for letting me speak. I know Dr. Miller was a little concerned, but anyway, first of all, thank you guys for what you have done for transportation. I speak for at least 100 drivers that are so thankful for the commitment you've made to us, and I know Chris Reed's somewhere here in the building, and the disciplinary program is fantastic. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
I want to introduce David, David Ellie. I've known David since I've came to work here, and I've always wanted this moment to be able to speak about what this gentleman is. He's the epitome of a bus driver. He's a pleasure to get up and work with every morning. He's just a ray of sunshine. And this letter he's about to read to all you guys is David. He brought it to me to talk about Ms. Potter and how awesome and how much of an influence she is. Well, this gentleman's also an influence, and I'm not trying to take from Ms. Potter, she's fantastic, but anything you ever want done, David is yes sir, yes sir, and when you thank him, he says it's my pleasure. And all I want to say, it's my pleasure to introduce David Ellie.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, esteemed members of the board, superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, please allow me, in the first place, to extend my sincerest gratitude for the opportunity to address this esteemed gathering. My name is David Ellie, and I proudly serve as a bus driver for the South Area District. I recognize that my speech may bear the distinctive essence of both Ghanaian and British English, but I assure you that I will endeavor to communicate clearly and effectively. I'm truly humbled to find myself in front of this august assembly today. I owe a debt of gratitude to my supervisor, Mr. John Davis, whose support and encouragement have made this moment possible. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to him and to all of you for affording me this opportunity. Today, however, is not about me, it is about Henry, Ms. Potter. Her contributions are enormous. With your kind permission, Madam Chairperson, I will proceed to read the letter. I'm writing to express my appreciation and recognition for the astounding contributions of Mrs. Maggie Potter, who is an assistant on my bus. Mrs. Potter has consistently gone above and beyond in ensuring the well-being and positive development of the students on our bus. Mrs. Potter does not only fulfill her responsibilities with diligence, but has also taken it upon herself to instill important moral values in the students. Instead of being bossy and pervasive, she has taken the initiative to teach the morals and lead by example as I drive the school bus. This approach is undoubtedly having positive impact on the student's behavior and character development on the bus and beyond. Moreover, Mrs. Potter has consistently treated the students with the utmost respect and kindness. She has created a safe and supportive environment on the school bus, where students feel valued and respected. It's evident that this approach has fostered a sense of community and contributed to a healthy atmosphere during their commute to and from school. I believe that recognizing and appreciating Mrs. Potter, exceptional efforts, it's important to encourage and motivate such positive behavior. Maggie exemplifies the values and qualities that we aim to instill in our students, and her dedication is truly commendable. I kindly request that Mrs. Potter be formally acknowledged for her exemplary service and contributions to our school community, whether through a public announcement, it's happening already, so I do not have to go over that. Thank you so much for considering my request. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much for those kind words. Mrs. Potter, would you like to come up for just a moment? And I know you're like, uh-oh, I'm gonna have to say something. So, no, I think it's exceptional. Whenever we receive a letter of recommendation from someone else within the district who's seen the special things that you're doing that really make a difference, it's very important for us to honor you and say thank you, and that you're seen and we appreciate you. I want to ask you, though, how long have you been with the district for?
Six months.
Six months, all right. Many more years of working with us, hopefully, so thank you so, so much. Fellow board members, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yeah, just super quick, I just want to say, there's no greater honor than being recognized and acknowledged by the people who work with you, and to hear that you've only been here six months and you've already made such an impact on the person you're sharing a space with is really incredible. Thank you to both of you for everything that you do, and thank you for supporting one another.
Could I say thank you to my principal for hiring me?
Thank you so much. All right, we actually have more, though, so... Don't go too far, because we're gonna take a picture with you guys, but we have one more recognition, I think, that we're gonna make today. Is Amy Cedar, are you here? All right, wonderful. And you are an instructional assistant at Meadow Primary. And bus driver Jenny Genwright, are you, you're with her? Perfect. All right, well, I think we got another wonderful recognition that hopefully you'll be willing to share.
Good evening to the board and Dr. Rendell. I'm Deanna Smith. I'm the proud principal at Meadow Lane Primary, and we are here this evening to recognize Ms. Amy Cedar, one of our pre-K instructional assistants, who serves in a blended classroom. So, she serves students in the gen ed setting and also students with exceptionalities, but not only does she use all of her energy in the classroom, she also is a bus IA. So, she rides a bus in the morning and the afternoon, and the reason why we're here is because one of our incredible bus drivers is wanting to honor Ms. Amy as her bus IA. So, I'm gonna let Ms. Jenny Genwright read the letter that she sent in.
Thank you. I first just wanted to say, when John introduced David wherever he went, I just wanted to agree with him. Mr. David is just the sweetest thing. He's so good to all of us, and he really, anytime you tell him thank you or you ask him to do something, you're just wonderful, David. Thank you. Thank you for just being wonderful and always helpful. I'll read you my letter. Thank you so much for honoring Amy tonight, for recognizing her for working so hard. My name is Jenny Genwright, and I've been a school bus driver for Brevard Public Schools for 10 years. I was recognized in the fall, which is why I knew it was okay to do this. So, I hope a lot of other people will know that it's okay to let people know that, let people know that it's okay to recognize people for doing a great job. I thought that that was really neat, that you guys do that. So, I was recognized at a school board meeting in the fall because of a letter sent to you by a parent of one of the students that I drive. I wanted to write to you about my Meadow Lane Primary instructional assistant. Her name is Amy Cedar. I pick her up every morning at 6:20. I just thought you guys should know that it's really that early when I pick her up. Amy's amazing. She goes above and beyond every single day. She and I are responsible for 62 students on our bus, among whom are quite a few pre-K, kindergarten, and ESE students. We would both tell you that we work as a team. That makes our bus a good place to be, and I am so grateful to have her. There are truly not enough words to say thank you for all the things she does, but I thought everyone should know what an incredible person she is, and I really do think you are. I'll start by just saying Amy is dependable, always there waiting and ready to go when I arrive to pick her up, though it's still dark, and she has two school-aged students of her own to take care of before she can begin her adventure with me. I'll attempt to list as many of the things that Amy does during our routes in the morning and afternoon as I can. She buckles and unbuckles pre-K students. She buckles and unbuckles ESE students, which there are quite a few. She gets out communication tablets for ESE students and listens to their needs, if you don't know what that is. They have tablets, they can't speak, many are autistic, nonverbal, and so, they have tablets that they push a button on to say what they need to communicate. So, she goes to see what it is that they're trying to communicate with us. She wipes the noses of a lot of students. So, that seems like not a big deal unless you're doing it a lot. She goes to or answers the needs of students with their hands up for any number of reasons, and there are a lot of students on this bus, y'all. She mediates disagreements. If you drive even two or three kids, you know that that's a thing. She helps get pre-K and kindergarten tags ready to be checked when we get to a bus stop, as we're making sure each student gets safely to their listed authorized pickup person in the afternoons. She reminds the students to get their things, so that they don't leave all their things on the bus. That's also a big deal. That's in the morning and the afternoon. After the students are off the bus, she picks up anything they've left behind and buckles any unbuckled seat belts. That's just a blessing to me. That's something she doesn't have to do. That's something she does just because she's a blessing to me. Being a bus driver's not an easy job. Amy would be the first one to tell you that. Being an IA is definitely not an easy job either. We have mutual respect, because what we do is tough, but doing it together as a team makes both of our jobs much easier. I hope you recognize her and join me in telling her how much you appreciate her hard work and dedication. She definitely deserves it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Amy, let me ask you, how long have you been with the district?
Six years.
Six years. Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much for all the hard work you do. There's no greater honor, like my board member said, than being recognized and acknowledged by your teammates that you're working alongside. We're gonna take a quick photo, if that's okay, if we can have the other group come back up. I don't think we need to go into formal recess, we'll just go ahead and snap a photo real quick. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, so, we have, again, back to all the fun, exciting things. We have so many fun, exciting things happening tonight. So, several of our high school students took part in the Top Tech Challenge, which is a statewide automotive competition, and yes, our teams here in Brevard County did very, very well. I think, Ms. Rutledge, are you gonna come up and show us just how well these teams did?
Absolutely, and I'd actually like to bring up our amazing instructors this evening. We have Ed Sabetka from Rockledge. I have Chris Wilson and Randy Pitts from Satellite, if you don't mind joining me up here. That'd be great. So, yes, we have some amazing automotive students. I would put our students up against any auto kids throughout the state and the nation. They are super competitive and skilled at the work that they do. So, we had three different, four different teams that placed at the state level in the Universal Technical Institute statewide competition, and I have their instructors here to talk just a little bit about that. Have some questions for them, also want you to hear from a student and a parent about this. But it's not just the UTI competition that they excelled in, they also excelled in our Skills USA competition, which is another career tech student organization that students can compete in a variety of, a variety of activities. So, instructors, please come up here real quick. I'd like to ask you first, since we have so many of your students here to highlight and their families, what characteristics do you see in your students that performed well in these competitions?
When a kid starts coming in, actually, when they come in as a freshman, I start looking at their potential. My number-one star student for the past three years, I pulled him out and put him in a competition as a freshman. I saw some, I saw a spark in him, and this was during COVID, and I only had him for six weeks at the time that I put him in his first competition, and he actually pulled out fifth place. You know, we worked really hard with him. hard with all our students, and something that I'm very proud of, and we're up for any kind of challenge. One thing that a lot of people don't really recognize is that when we go play other schools, that whole school represents a county. It's countywide. And we got six automotive programs. So imagine if we all just had one school and we had the best students of all, nobody that ever touched us. But we do an amazing job with what we have, and something that I'm very proud of, I always have been with the 18 years I've been here.
Thank you.
To add to what Randy said is, you know, as the automotive program of Brevard County, each year that we go to this competition, it's always Brevard schools that are finishing up top. I remember taking a group of students, and there's 20-some schools there, and they start at, I think, like 10th place, and they start going down the list. And they're like, oh my God, we're at fifth, and we're still not called. We must have done terrible. And the next thing they know, their names are called. And they're obviously proud of their accomplishments. So it's always exciting to go to competitions and see the kids. I've had parents write me letters saying that was their highlight of their high school career. So it's always pretty, you know, rewarding for the students as well as the instructors.
Can I ask a question, just because I don't know what these competitions look like?
Yeah.
I've never been to one. And so can you tell me, what are they doing when they compete?
This year, UTI threatened and says, we're changing the whole competition, you better be ready. And I said, I am ready, bring it on. We're not scared of nobody. And we actually pulled out first this year. We're actually the first school with a back-to-back first-place win ever in the 12-year history.
Yes. Commendable.
And UTI, to me, is the most fairest competition out there. You know, nobody really has, they don't have anybody to root for. They don't put, you know, it's totally different from the other competitions we do. They don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, because when we go to the other, at Skills USA, we play against the other school. The hosting school has their competitors in that competition. So they already have a leg up on us. And when we can still win against the other schools that are hosting the competition, that's a big accomplishment, I feel. But UTI, again, they're fair to everybody. And they had rumors that some schools had some insight to it, so they threatened, and they changed everything this year. And I'm glad they do. I hope they change it every year.
Can you tell them specifically what types of competitions the kids compete in?
Okay. We did, they had to do electrical stations, they had to do a brake station, they had to do an AC station.
Written test.
A written test. And there was five different stations.
Parts identification.
And parts identification were the five different tests that they did. And two of my, they also had individual trophies this year for the highest scores. My number one guy got a 96, my number two guy got a 95.
Wow.
Total of scores.
That's amazing.
And which we were very proud of, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else to add on this one? Okay, so what I'm hearing is that our automotive students, we can stack them up against anybody and they're gonna take the win, right? That's what we want, yeah. And I told these gentlemen before I came up here, I have a shirt from all of these schools. And Heritage, I also have a shirt from Heritage. Mr. Browde wasn't able to be here this evening, but I told them I couldn't pick which one, so I didn't wear any. I didn't want to represent the wrong way here.
Gotta keep it fair.
Okay. So what are you most proud of with your students?
I think what I'm most proud of with our students is the passion for the trade, how they excel in school, not just in our program, which obviously they make as much time as possible in their day. But just, it carries over into the rest of their school day as well. We get a lot of teachers that we share students with that will contact us and ask us about our students. And they're just blown away that they're as involved and that they are, you know, not just in our program, but in the school in general. And kind of brag on our school a little bit, we have a pretty good sense of community in our school. And we're very, very proud of that. So.
What was the question?
What are you most proud of with your students?
Yeah, they're passionate about their studies. They, you know, they're obviously in the automotive class because that's what they're passionate about. And most of the guys that go to these competitions, they're working in the local dealerships here in town. I have students working at the Lincoln dealer right up the street, Toyota, you name it. All the dealerships in this county are employing our students. So that's, at the end of the day, that's our job, to get them employed. And that's what we're trying to achieve. So the students are passionate about, you know, what they're doing, and it shows in their future.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And just to kind of feed into that, I know we were talking about pizza in the math classroom. Well, there's kind of some correlation with our mesh classes and our career tech ed. They're learning about measurement and math in their automotive. And we're not making any pizzas there, but, you know, they're reinforcing those skills. Okay. So I'd like to call up really quickly, Ms. Stephanie White. She is a parent of one of our automotive students. She just wanted to say what this program has done for her child.
Hi, good evening. I've been an educator and currently an assistant principal with Brevard for over 20 years. And I've been fortunate to see the impact that teachers have on students a lot. But tonight, I'm wearing my parent hat because I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Mr. Wilson and Mr. Pitts for the program that they run at Satellite and the influence it has had on my son. Their dedication and their commitment to their students is unwavering. They open their shop up early every morning of the week, and they have a room full of kids that are there to practice. They give up their evenings and their weekends to go to competitions that are long and very boring sometimes. Sorry, guys. They bring guest speakers in to talk to the kids about different careers. They have helped them write applications to scholarship programs. The list goes on and on and on. And I just can't say enough about what they do for the students at Satellite. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Pruitt and Ms. Lundey for supporting the automotive program at Satellite. And I know there's a time commitment that comes with that. So as you sit here in your position, I wanted to just take a moment to say to you, as you think about CTE education, continue to support it because it is impacting kids on a level you can only begin to understand. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Jason, do you want to come up here and say something really quickly? Jason is one of our rock stars that we're recognizing tonight. He's a winner on many, many competitions with our, from Satellite.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight to let me speak. Is this on?
It is.
The Satellite Auto Tech plays an important role for kids like me who are looking for opportunities outside of the traditional path. Being in this program the last four years has allowed me to become better through competition. For example, I'm the back-to-back winner of the Universal Top Tech Challenge. This program ran by Mr. Wilson and Mr. Pitts has produced a lot of other winners, as shown as everybody sitting next to me. This speaks volumes about our program at Satellite. I chose this program because I am fascinated by cars. Through my competition winnings, I have secured a full ride to Universal Technical Institute to their NASCAR school to study CNC machining. The Satellite program has helped many kids like me find a career path that we enjoy. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. And thank you, Dr. Randell, and everybody on the board.
Thank you, Jason.
And to wrap it up this evening, Randy Pitts would like to say something.
I have been teaching at Satellite High School for 18 years. And unfortunately, I'm going to retire this year. I've had a wonderful career at Satellite High School. It's, I've done things that I didn't know was out there. I have taken students and won things that our backs were against the wall, and we came out on top. I've had several principals say, or a couple principals say, you sure you can do this? Sure, we can do this, and still come out on top. Everything that we have done, we have been in the top percentage of every competition that we have ever entered. We've done Skills USA, Ford AAA, the Quaker State Best in Class Challenge, UTI, and Dealers Association, Dealers, Central Florida Dealers Competition, which we also went to New York City in. So like, again, I thank y'all for supporting the CTE program. We have students that come up and say, and I had a couple of them come today and say, you know, if it wasn't this program, I wouldn't be here at Satellite today. It's, these type programs keep these kids in school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
And Randy, you've made such an impact for our kids over the years, and we are really gonna miss you. But are glad you're gonna get to take that RV and hit the road. But very grateful for your service to our kids. So.
Thank you. I think we wanted to take a great photo with you guys, too.
Yeah, I want to ask something real quick.
If anyone wants to speak, okay, go ahead.
So Mr. Pitts, if you guys can come up to the podium, and I want to hear from the kids, just a yay or nay. One of the things is, we have the best career and technical automotive programs in the state. There's no doubt. You guys win every competition. But the thing is, is that when I go to other states, North Carolina, Texas, other places like that, schools actually have race car teams. You guys go to Gator Nationals, right? Didn't we just do a big field trip? Why isn't we don't just have a team, a high school team, that goes and competes? Would you guys be interested in doing something like that, if I was able to pull it together with the?
We'd take on any kind of challenge.
That sounds like, Mr. Pitts, sounds like I might be able, I might be able to talk you into coming back. That's what I'm saying. Hey, from the back, the kids, would you guys be interested in something like that? That's what I'm talking about.
You could put off his retirement if you do that.
That's it. I'm serious, Mr. Pitts.
I'm actually a former drag car racer.
I know that, and that's one of the reasons I was talking about it, is because, to be honest with you, I've seen it, and I've seen the inspiration that it gives to the children when you have a team like that. And they go, and they beat a lot of teams that are sponsored by other programs. And I had a conversation with a couple of people that are very high influential people in the race car industry, and they would be very interested in trying to do something like that. And now Dr. Randell's gonna fall out of his seat because I'm talking about putting together race teams for the company. Thank you.
I want to jump in there really quick. First of all, Mr. Pitts, you can't leave until you find your own replacement. So we work on that, and then we'll let you, then we'll let you retire, right? You said something really important when you talked about the way other districts do it, because they have a technical center, and everybody who's going to be a part of the automotive program has to go to that technical center. I am a huge advocate to continue to do it the way we do it in Brevard, because that allows such greater access for students who, going to a technical center that's 20, 30 miles away or farther, is just not going to work for everybody. So we have excellent programs from north to south. We have excellent programs all the way down from Heritage up to Titusville, teaching students these skills. We don't have it at every high school, but we have it somewhere close. So students are passionate about cars, about mechanics, about auto body, whatever it is. We've got somewhere close by that has a program that they, where they can get this training and be ready to go out into the workforce. So I appreciate the leadership that was in place before I ever got here to make sure that we have programs from north to south. But it has to be staffed with people who are passionate. And clearly, our automotive teachers in Brevard are passionate and passing that on to their students. So thank you for what you do, and I'm really proud of the work that you guys do from all across the district.
Thank you, Ms. Dan.
One thing, let me, some of the teams that we go up against are actually, they're VOTEC centers and sponsored by Ford Chrysler or General Motors, or all three of them.
Yep.
Wow.
So they are multimillion-dollar schools, and we're still right in the fight and ring with them. We still can hold our own against them.
Testimony to your good leadership. Ms. Jenkins, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have an exciting announcement for a new automotive competition. It's a rusted old 2009 Hyundai Elantra that's in my driveway. About 180,000 miles. We can see what you guys can do with it. No, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want to see you walk away without acknowledging you publicly. Mr. Pitts, you are a landmark in the Satellite Beach community. And I'm happy for you that you are retiring. But I know that you are gonna break a lot of hearts, because there's some generational families there that are gonna be a little sad that you're gone. But thank you for all that you do. I hear nothing but wonderful things about you, even from my husband on the soccer field.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Mr. Trent, do you have anything?
I just want to say, job well done, guys. And congratulations on your 18 years here. I'm sure you're gonna continue with that enthusiasm in your next chapter.
Race car.
Race car.
Race car. Thank you again.
No, we truly appreciate you. And this is one of those life skills that you teach that these kids will grow on to be men, and they'll teach these lessons to their sons. And it really, really changes the world for the better. So thank you so, so much. And I would vouch to say, what do you think your job placement rate is? I mean, if you were gonna say, out of the students we have, we're, what do you think that is?
It's getting better and better. Every year, we have dealers that are calling us right now. Do you got any seniors that we can put to work? The bigger problem was the age factor, because everybody wants to be 18. But some of the dealers are starting to hire people at 17. We got independent shops that are calling us now for students. It took us a long time to get there. But everybody in Brevard County knows all about, all the programs here in Brevard. And, you know, we got, percentage-wise, it's hard to really say. But we got several students, each program's got several students out there in the field right now working. And I try to encourage my students to go on the UTI post-secondary, because they should be going to post-secondary before they hit the work world. And out of there, they're just about all getting a job in this industry.
I would vouch to say, I would vouch that that emerged probably significantly high, if not close to 100%.
And our young men and young ladies are finding opportunities in automotive, which is really exciting, even through the internship program their senior year.
Absolutely. Dr. Randell, do you have something you would like to add?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have the students here. And I believe, all the students here, they placed, right, at the competition. So I want to have a big picture with them up here. But I want each of them to come to the microphone and say their name, what school they're at, and where they placed in the competition.
All right.
So they need, they need some time in the spotlight. So let's get them all up here. I know we got the first-place team, but we've got others, too. And they've all placed, they've all done really well. So we need to get them up here. So name, school, and what you guys placed?
I'm Koa Kelly, and I'm at Satellite. And we got first place at UTI Top Tech Challenge.
Awesome.
Jason White, I was Koa's partner, and we got first place.
All right.
So you guys line up over here.
My name's Owen Erickson. My partner is, right there? His name's Shaffer Cook. We placed second place in the automotive competition and got $7,500 scholarships.
All right.
What school? What school were you guys at?
What school?
Rock, Rock.
There we go, see? All right.
My name is Bryce Giannantonio at Satellite High School. My partner here is Gage Underwood, and we won 10th place with a $1,000 scholarship.
Awesome.
Outstanding.
My name's Jonathan Smith, and my friend here is Keegan Blunt. We both placed fifth place and got a $1,000 scholarship to UTI.
Did you say your school?
From Heritage, right?
From Heritage, okay.
Yeah, that's Heritage.
Awesome. All right, we're gonna.
All right, big picture.
Snap a photo with you guys?
The scholarship money was, first place was $10,000 per student, second place was $7,500 per student, third place was $5,000 per student, and then fourth through 10th all got $1,000 per student. So they did really well. So they did really well.
Great things we're celebrating tonight. I know you guys are like, okay, when is it going to be our turn? All right, we have student champions to honor tonight. So during the recent Florida Wrestling State Championship, we had a total of 26 wrestlers from nine schools that medaled. The director for the district athletics, Kevin Robinson, are you here?
There he is.
Where is he? Okay, I'm like, are you back there? All right, so you're going to come to the podium and showcase some of these young men and women and the achievements that they have accomplished.
Good evening, Ms. Wright, school board, and Dr. Rindell. Gives me great pleasure to recognize the 26 wrestlers who medaled at the state championships earlier this month, including the two wrestlers who won individual state championships. So Brevard qualified 52 wrestlers from 12 schools altogether for the state tournament. And exactly half of those wrestlers earned medals for placing in the top eight in their respective weight classes. Ms. Wright and Dr. Rindell, I invite you guys down to come to the front and center.
And I'm like, what's happening?
We're on a ribbon streak.
No live demonstrations. How about the wrestling board come out?
Don't be nervous, this is not a demonstration, so. Okay, students, when I call your name, come to the front, shake hands with Ms. Wright and Dr. Rindell, and then move to the far side of the days. We will go alphabetically by school. First up, from Astronaut High School, Preston Panero was seventh place in the state. I don't think Preston could make it tonight, but still wanted to recognize him. From Cocoa High School, we have Cole Webb, seventh place in the state also. And from Cocoa Beach High School, Adrian Day, fifth in the state. Billy Day, seventh place in the state. And Madden Fredenberg, third place in the state as a freshman. And next up, from Heritage High School, the first state champion in school history at Heritage High School, Solomon Peterson. And seventh place in the state is Gustavo Ferreira. Keith Cole was fifth in the state. And Caleb Gabrielson came in at third place in the state. And finally, Harper Noel was fifth place in his weight class. Next up is Merritt Island High School. And first up, we have state champion Caleb Ivy. Trey Driggitt placed eighth in the state. And Landon Corogo finished up sixth place in his weight class. Since we're on Merritt Island High School, I also want to kind of take a minute to give a shout out to former Merritt Island High School state champ Elijah Lusk, who is now wrestling for Lander University. The reason I'm saying this is because Elijah, last weekend, placed sixth in the NCAA Division II National Tournament, helping his team to a second place finish overall. So with that finish, Elijah is now a two-time All-American as a junior. So it's just good to see Brevard wrestlers having successes to college level also. Just wanted to point that out. And from Palm Bay High School, we have Chris Brunson, fourth place in the state. Leonard Christian, also fourth place in the state. And Octavian Osby, third in the state. Also placing for Palm Bay High School, at eighth place in the state, Raymond Jackson. Raymond couldn't be here tonight. Next up, from Satellite High School, Ryan Byrne, third in the state. Ryan will be wrestling at Duke University next year. Anthony Dix, fourth place in the state. And Jake Giovino, second place in the state. Next up, from Titusville High School, Parker Bryant, seventh in the state. And from Vieira High School, Alex Gilletti, fifth place in the state. And Emma Hoppy, second place in the state. Catalina Kenny, fifth place in the state. Ryan Mitchell, sixth in state. And Edwin Torres, eighth in state. Congrats to all of our wrestlers who earned state medals this season. I am super proud of all these wrestlers and coaches for their accomplishments and for all the hard work that they've put in to get there. In fact, we have some of the coaches here today. I want to ask you guys to go ahead and stand and be recognized for all your hard work. Board members and Dr. Rindell, would you guys like to say anything? Absolutely. Coaches, come on down.
Waiting patiently, and so I know they're like, hey, we're leaving. Real quick, I just want to say, hey, thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing, the dedication that you make as a wrestler, making weight, the physical training, the matches. I mean, it is impressive. It's something you'll carry with you for the rest of your life. But we just want to say, hey, we're proud of you guys, we recognize you guys, and way to go represent our county very well.
Can I, I want to just say, before the coaches leave, when you all were asked to stand up, you all were very humble, and of course, didn't want to take recognition. But I just want to give another hats off to you guys, because anyone who's working in our athletics department is not getting paid enough for the job that they do in the first place. You do this because you love it, and you love those kids, and you support them. So thank you and congratulations for all your hard work.
Thank you, coaches.
So many people don't know this, but our female wrestling is the highest and fastest growing portion of our female athletes. And what we have is the situation where, a couple of years ago, one of the coaches advocated for us to put in stipends for female coaches. And that's truly what really blew up the female coaching for wrestling. And as a former coach that coached wrestling, it was the most demanding sport I've ever coached in my life. And I've coached almost every one of them at the high school level, but that was incredible. And what those kids did at a state championship is unheard of, so just wanted to say.
Very impressive.
That's a growing sport.
Yes, all right. So, all right, we have one more group, I think, that we are recognizing tonight. So I know you guys are patiently waiting, and we appreciate the patience there. So we are going to invite, is Ms. Cindy Lizinski available, or is she... She's coming up to the podium. All right, good. We are going to honor our school bookkeepers. This will be the second round that we're honoring. We did honor a group in February 6th, but we want to honor the remaining school bookkeepers that we did not get in that batch. So Ms. Lizinski, can you come up and... I think you have prepared the list.
Making sure my team's here.
All right.
Okay, tonight, we are pleased to honor and celebrate the outstanding achievements of our district schools in the area of financial management and accountability. As you may know, every year, our schools are required by state law to undergo an internal accounts audit. This audit examines how our schools handle the funds that are raised, collected, and spent for student activities such as field trips, clubs, teams, and events. These funds are vital for enriching the educational experience for our students, but they also pose a high risk of fraud, misuse, or error. That is why we need to ensure our schools follow the best practices of internal controls and comply with state statutes and board policy. Our accounting firm, RSM, audited the financial records and procedures at each of our schools. They checked for accuracy, timeliness, completeness, authorization, documentation, and compliance in various areas such as receipts, deposit, expenditures, fundraising, sales tax, and petty cash. They also issued a final report for each school, which indicated whether there were any audit findings or not. A report of no audit findings means that the auditors did not find any issues or errors in the areas noted above. It's actually a very remarkable achievement, and it reflects the high level of professionalism, integrity, and excellence that our school leaders and staff demonstrate every day. The research is clear, leaders of schools who demonstrate the highest level of financial stewardship and spend money wisely have a significant impact on positive student outcomes. It is also extremely important that we provide confidence to the board and our community that our schools maintain rigorous internal controls and make every dollar count. So I would like to invite each bookkeeper and their principal. So Apollo Elementary, bookkeeper is Deborah Bryant. Principal Amy De Lego. Atlantis Elementary, Rebecca Emick. And Erica Back is the principal. Creole Elementary, Shinawa Long. Shinawa, sorry, Long. And the principal is Nicole Gayman. Gemini Elementary, bookkeeper Dee Dee Rich. And principal Christina Carver. Harbor City Elementary, bookkeeper is Lisa Marie Kelly. And the principal is Christine Boyd. India Atlantic Elementary, Lynette Torres is not attending, but the principal is accepting for her, Colleen Lord. Longleaf Elementary, the bookkeeper is Carleen Caesar. And principal Jason Sherburne. Meadow Lake Intermediate, the bookkeeper is Sarah Blake. Yay. And the principal is Sarah Barnett. Ralph Williams Elementary, the bookkeeper is Lisa Moore. And principal Susan Schroeder. South Lake Elementary, bookkeeper is Jackie Sellers. And principal Jennifer Brockwell. Stone Middle, bookkeeper is Denise Olson. And the principal is Courtney Lundie. Sun Tree Elementary, the bookkeeper is Kelly Mogford. And principal Sherry Tressler. University Park Elementary, the bookkeeper is Tanya Hales. And principal Anna Diaz. And our last school is Vieira High, bookkeeper Renee Ambrose, with principal Heather Legate. Thank you all.
Let's go ahead and... I'll give them just a minute.
Yeah, I just meant it sometime.
We will, yes. We have the proclamation.
Yeah.
That's after the agenda.
Adoption of the agenda, and then I'd say look to the proclamation so that those guys can go, and then we'll break before we go into public comment. Is that fair?
Do we have administrators?
Do we have what? Do we have what?
Oh, the administrators are after.
Yep. Alright, we're back. Okay, wonderful, so, I thought we were not going to get here, guys, but...
We're here.
We're here, alright. This brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this evening's agenda, we have a resolution, administrative staff recommendations, 26 consent items, two action items, and one information item. The additional items are I-44 Code of Conduct, and the revised items are B-10 Bookkeeper Audit Recognition, and C-12 Kindness All Around Symbol Resolution.
Do I hear a motion?
We'll do approve.
Second. Any discussion? Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
Alright, on tonight's agenda, we have something very, very special. We have the Resolution for the Kindness All Around Symbol. This is a national symbol that was created by our students and our staff right here in Tropical Elementary. We invite these students tonight, I think we have a couple that are kind of come up, I believe, and read the proclamation, is that...
Come on down.
Ms. Barber, are you coming up as well? Okay. Is the, is the step stool still there for the... Okay, perfect. I love it.
Hi, thank you for having us today, Dr. Rendell, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. I wish all the wrestlers were still here. They really filled up the auditorium. We're celebrating the fifth anniversary of the kindness symbol, and we appreciate the adoption of it five years ago. The kindness symbol started with my TK class in 2018. We were studying Patriots Day and the 10 Days of Peace, and the children told me that people should be kind, and that they believed that if people saw a symbol of kindness, it would remind them to be kind. So, we developed a kindness symbol, and we gave it to the world. The students proceeded to follow their own advice. They were kind to each other in our classroom and out, they were role models to each other, they stood up for each other, they helped each other, they didn't just act kind, they also paid it forward, literally. They read thousands of books to earn more than a thousand dollars to donate to their chosen charities such as the Children's Hunger Project, Aging Matters, and Lessons With Love. Feed the kids, help the grandparents, and help people across the world. And through it all, they had a high level of learning. When you read thousands of books, you become a great reader. I'd like to share a few quotes, some of my favorite quotes that my students wrote throughout the years. I want you to know that when they wrote these quotes, they were six years old, six. You're going to be impressed. Kindness is important because it is like peace, Rosalie. Kindness is important because it shows a caring personality, Julia said that. All these students are not here right now. These are just some of my other ones, but Rosie's here, and so is Tommy, we're going to get to his. Kind people will ask if you are feeling left out. Kind people will stick up for other people, Katalaya. Kindness is important because it will make people happy, and then people will spread it, Noah. Kindness is important because it will help people feel loved, Tommy. Kindness is important because it will make the world a better place, Lyra, six years old. That is a good one. From the mouths and hearts of our early childhood learners, they have been telling us what kind of world they want to live in. If we only choose to listen and act, let's help them reach their dream of a kinder world. Be kind, act kind, and spread the kindness symbol. I'd like to introduce our readers for tonight. I'm going to include the year they were in my TK classroom also, so you can see that it did span throughout the years. Rosalie will be our first reader, she's 2019-20 class. Denver, I did not have the honor of being Denver's teacher, but Denver wanted to join our kindness project, and so he's here with his siblings. Shoal, our 2020 through 2022 class. Tommy, 2019-2020 class. August, 2018-2019 class. And Malachi, 2018-2019 class. August and Malachi were here five years ago, reading the kindness proclamation before the board at that time. I have to tell you, I'm so proud of these students, not for what they've done, but also for their patience in sitting in the audience for an hour and a half. And, and I'm also proud of our other students who just couldn't make it today for conflicting experiences they had. Thank you again for having us, and now I'm going to leave it to the kids.
Alright. You're going to do great, Rosalie.
Be quiet, Tommy.
It's okay, you've done this before.
I know, it's just weird. A resolution of the school board, of the school board, of Brevard County. Recognizing the five-year anniversary of the kindness all-around symbol, whereas this kindness symbol was in...
You're doing great.
You're doing so good.
Initiative started in the TK1 Transitional Kindergarten Classroom at Tropical Elementary in Merritt Island, and... Whereas, wait, whereas the tropical class determined having a symbol for kindness would help make people more aware of kindness in their everyday lives, and... Since then, the kindness symbol has received many recognitions, including a resolution from the Brevard School Board on February 26, 2019.
On February 19th, 2020, the Florida House of Representatives and the Florida Senate both signed resolutions recognizing the creation and proclamation of the kindness symbol, and... Whereas on March, whereas on March, oh god, that's loud. Whereas on March 5th, 2020, US House Resolution 887 was referred to the Committee on Education and Labor. On March 6th, 2020, Representative Posey submitted remarks to the Congressional Record recognizing the kindness symbol, and on June 29th, 2021, US House Resolution 509 submitted by Representative Posey and co-sponsored by Representative Darren Soto, Representative Brian Mast, and Representative Maria Elvira Salivar, Salivar, making it a bipartisan resolution, was also referred to the Committee on Education and Labor. Now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Brevard County, Florida, that the fifth anniversary of the kindness all-around the symbol is hereby recognized with all parents, students, community members, residents, and visitors of Brevard County, Florida. Encouraged to use and promote this official symbol of kindness, adopted in regular session of the School Board of Brevard County on this 19th day of March 2024.
Okay, let, we're going to go ahead, do I have a motion, and then we'll open this up for discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
I, yeah, I, I am going to say this as fast as I possibly can, but because this is going to be my last year where this is happening, I have to take a moment to say this to Ms. Wilcox. And I think I've said this previously in the past, super fast, but I, I don't care, I'm going to get into it. You are the most incredible teacher, and you are the reason I am an educator today. And I've been able to share this story, this past year, I've been going out and speaking at events, and I always feel the need to share my why, and I've never really had the opportunity to do it, and I just need to acknowledge that. My mom, when she was really ill, my parents made a last-minute decision to move to Florida, and so I made a last-minute decision to join them. And I wasn't happy, and I failed out of college. And they told me, come to Brevard County, get your AA, we'll send you back to New York, and so I did. And I took like 24 credits in one semester because I wanted to get out of here. And I took random classes that I could care less about. I wanted to be a business major and go work on Wall Street, but I took an elementary education course that forced me to come to you at Endeavor Elementary. And I spent that day with you, and I have never met a person who had loved their passion, their profession, and their children so much. You forever changed my life, and you changed my trajectory from that day forward, and I need you to know that, and I thank you for that. And my husband thanks you for that because I met him in that class too. So, thank you, and I just want to say, you guys are so brave to stand up here in front of all of us funny-looking adults standing behind a wooden platform. You are amazing, great job.
Ms. Campbell.
Well, it was, it is my honor to have been on the board, you know, twice for you guys to come around, and I'm so glad, Ms. Wilcox, that you brought some of the original TK1ers. Are you guys in fifth grade or sixth grade? Fourth. No, the oldest ones. You're in fifth, wow. What, you know what, when this initiative, when those kids hit middle school, it's just going to change middle school, right? I, I just want to share and do a little advertising, a little promo for you. You can go to TogetherKind.com and get all the history and all the places, it should have listed all the places that have adopted this symbol, right, which is not just the school board and the state, but also the county commissioners did it, some of the cities did it. You can get a history of what this symbol has done, and it also will link you, if you want to get your very own shirt to the Etsy shop. Stand up so you can see my shirt. But it's, you know what, you guys, this isn't just for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. Every single one of us in this room needs to remember the importance of kindness and how we treat one another, because in this room, there's people who don't agree with each other, but we have a choice. We can say what we need to say with kindness, or we can say it unkindly. And which one do you think everybody else wants to hear? With kindness, right, exactly. And you know what, I'm a big believer that regardless of what you have to say, you can always say it and do it kindly. So, thank you for reminding us of that tonight, you guys are amazing, and I'll be very proud to vote in favor of this in just a few seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Susan.
Just want to say thank you for you guys coming out. Thank you so much for what you guys are persevering to do, I appreciate you and all your dedication as an educator, thank you.
Mr. Trent.
Same, guys, reading in public is not the easiest, right? And you guys, it'll be, hey, you broke the ice, you finished it, so, you know, you faced that fear and it overcame it, so, from now on, it's going to be, nobody's going to be able to shut you up now, you're going to be able to read in front of anyone, as many people as possible, so that, that's great. Thank you so much for putting this forward.
Yes, thank you guys so much, I want to share, little, Rosalie, I see you back there. You came up and you were so kind to give us a sticker to remind us, which I have put on my laptop, I think some of my fellow board members have stuck theirs in different places, but you gave me a Post-it note too, and it says, "You have the power to change the world simply by being an example of kindness." And so, I'm going to keep this, I'm going to keep it up here at all times, so I'll never forget that that is why we should always, always, always display our behaviors, so thank you guys so much, I am so happy to proudly vote yes for this. The world needs more kindness, and I appreciate you guys taking the initiative to spread it, so, alright, any other further discussions? No, Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Trent.
Aye.
Mr. Susan.
Aye.
It passes, 5-0, the kindness resolution stays. Thank you guys so much. Yep, we're going to, can we take a picture with you guys, is that okay down front? Alright, I think, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so, can we take a 10-minute recess and resume back at 7:22? Alright, thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right. Um, I think, are, are you guys okay if we take a short recess? I need to go to the restroom, so.
Yes.
Can we take a ten-minute recess and resume back at seven-twenty-two? All right. Thank you. All right.
A swimmer, and whatever we can do to help achieve that goal is what we want to do. The industry a number of years ago embraced doing pool alarms, safety fence, automatic door closures. None of that stuff does near as good as water safety education, adult supervision, and training. We can save lives that way. We had one device that was supposed to automatically close a sliding glass door around the pool. As everyone knows, in Florida, we have sliding glass doors everywhere. We actually were designing a guillotine is what that thing was. That wasn't going to save anyone's life. We currently put an alarm on a pool that's made overseas somewhere at the expense of $185 per alarm. That's not going to save a child's life. It's all smoke and mirrors. What's going to save a child's life is education, training, and Brooke is when she joined our group a few years ago, it has been a whirlwind. We think we can bring this to reality. We asked the school board to consider supporting this endeavor. I think we can do it. We're willing and able to help them do it. We want to save children. We want every child to be a swimmer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathleen Ruaga, Gina Derringe, and Bernard Brian.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Rueska. I'm actually here on behalf of Carrie McGovern. She's the Every Child a Swimmer Program Manager for the state of Florida. And I don't know if you're all familiar with the Every Child a Swimmer Law. It went into effect in 2022-23 school year. Each public school shall provide a parent who initially enrolls his or her child in the school information on the important role water safety education and courses in swimming lessons play in saving lives. The number one cause of death for kids from one to four years old, four years old, is drowning. The second cause of death for kids from four years to 15 is drowning. This is a letter from Carrie, she couldn't be here, from Casey, I'm sorry. To the esteemed members of the school board, my name is Casey McGovern. I am the mother of a drowning victim. My daughter passed away from a drowning in our backyard pool in 2009. Upon saying goodbye to her, I made a promise to commit my life to educating others on the risk factors associated to drowning. I have dedicated my life to the topic of water safety and drowning prevention. Holding the position of the drowning prevention program manager for the Department of Health of Broward County, as well as sitting on many statewide committees, I am now leading the efforts for Every Child a Swimmer Program. A program that passed legislation in our state mandating all schools to share water safety information and where to go for local swim lessons. The program also provides Learn to Swim scholarships for quality lessons up to three months for children from low-income families. I come before you today with a heartfelt plea to endorse Brooke Bothan as the implementer of a water safety program at Dr. W.J. Cleal Elementary. As we deliberate on the crucial issues of water safety, it is imperative that we entrust this responsibility to a dedicated and qualified individual who possesses both the passion and expertise necessary to make a meaningful impact on the lives of youth. Brooke's passion and expertise, I'm sorry, book some wavering commitment to the safety and well-being of children is evident in her extensive experience and proven track record in the field of aquatic education. With a background in swimming instruction and lifeguarding, Brooke brings a wealth of knowledge and practical skills to the table, making her eminently qualified to lead a water safety program at our school. The proposed closure of the school only jeopardizes recreational opportunities, but also undermines our commitment to fostering a culture of water safety among the residents of Brevard County. In a region committed, in a region surrounded by waterways, beaches, the ability to swim is not merely a leisure activity, but a crucial life skill that can prevent tragedies and save lives. However, I come bearing a beacon of hope in the form of Every Child a Swimmer Program. This initiative not only provides-
Thank you, Kathleen. Can you do me a favor? Is it possible for you to email the board the remainder of that speech so that we have that? Sorry, the three-minute timeframe is up, though. But yes, thank you.
Gina Derringe, Bernard Brian, Diana Haynes.
Good evening, Board. I just want to share a delightful Thursday we spent last week. The Legal Women Voters attended the Science Fair at Central Middle School last Thursday, where we awarded our Indian River Lagoon Dolphin that Fran Bear, those of you who know Fran, herself put the sand in the Dolphin. It focuses on the health and survival of the Indian River Lagoon. I want to thank the staff at Central Middle School, Heather, who I worked with at Viera, for getting the gym ready, providing lunch, but also for the staff at the district who work so hard, all the teachers and principals that were behind the scenes, making sure that we knew where to go for the different exhibits and where, if we had any questions at all, to go to them. They work so, so well. The young man that we awarded, the award to, I can't say his name, was from Holland, and his project was on the effects of nitrogen poop on the Indian River red mangroves. And he was just adorable. He owned that project. He told us all about it. The added addition to that is that a friend of mine was at the last school board meeting when I mentioned the other, the other competition we looked at in the north, who is a dean at Bayside. And she texted me that night and said, hey, you know, you need judges for this? And I said, yeah. And she said, can you, can you hook me up with the judges? Because our National Honor Society students need to do something like this for volunteer hours, and our AP physics class would like to do it. So they showed on the scene, 10 of them, kind of alleviated the pressure of the judges in certain areas, and they came in and they were outstanding. How they interacted with the kids and asked questions and looked at their logbooks, it was, it was just amazing. So, great job by the district, great job by the kids and the teachers. I also want to acknowledge the passing of John Fields, who was a teacher at Sherwood Elementary for 27 years. We lost John March the 10th. He was just an outstanding guy. Loved the kids, loved the community. I worked with him as a member of the PTO at Sherwood, where my daughter attended, and also as a substitute teacher, and it was a pleasure to work with him. And please keep his wife, Janine, in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Brian, Diana Haynes, Crystal Casey.
Thank you, Board. My name is Bernard Brian, and I represent the South Brevard Branch NWCP, as well as the concerned citizens of South Brevard. I spent over the last five years trying to understand Brevard Public School system, and I'm still lost today as I was five years ago. But there's just a couple of things I want to share and bring to light, and I would like to thank this board for listening to us and being supportive of us and really trying to help our children. Just a couple of things that I would like to share with you today. I spend a lot of time looking at data, trying to understand why this child is not doing well, and what can we do to help that child. As you're aware, I'm at five different schools as SAC members. I mentor 16 kids so that I can do everything I can to help that child. But just a couple of things. I've looked at your PM2 data. I still see some opportunities there with reading and math. So, as I heard from the dais today, there's a lot of opportunities, jobs that are in these communities, and if our children do not have the reading and math skills, they aren't going to fulfill those jobs. And just, I would like to bring to light, when I look at Brevard Public Schools, they are 35 C schools, based on your last FAST analysis, and then they are 4D schools. So, out of the population of around 87, so we have a lot of opportunity there. And I would like to challenge this board, what can we do in your district to help every school within the next two years to become a B school? So, so what can everybody on this dais do so that that can happen? And I truly believe if we look at those data, look at that opportunity, there's, there's nothing this district cannot do. And to be honest with you, I visit with many principals. I see the hardworking of your staff. I see the hard working of your teachers. But in order for them to get to that B level, it's going to take this board's support, it's going to take this team's support. Look at what those principal needs, because they're going to get burned out. You know, when you look at being a D school and a, in a C school, and they look at the other competitive schools, they're going to want to compete to that level. And so I'm just asking if you will consider, you know, provide the resources that the principal needs. Some schools may need more than others in order to get to that B level. So I just challenge you, at least over the next two years in your district, what can you do to make that school a B school? And, last thing I want to say, please caduce that with the community. What are you doing to make your school a B school?
Thank you, Bernard.
Diana Haynes, Crystal Casey, Gregory Ross.
Good evening. Well, I'm back six months later, and I still have no answers to the questions that I have asked over and over this board. And I'd like to start from the beginning. I'd like to start about a public, about a form that we all fill out to speak during these meetings, which I had a parent fill out for me one day when I was late in traffic, and somehow from the table outside to the dais, the form disappeared. There was never any video shown to me, even though I asked repeatedly, of her filling out the form and handing it in. And that's rather shoddy public records, if you ask me. And then I came before this board multiple times regarding an incident that we're all aware of, the alleged sexual assault at Johnson Jr. High School. It's almost two and a half years now, and there still have been no answers definitively. I have a police report where two parents, a parent and an in-law and a teacher have a conversation. They say this event occurred at Johnson Jr. I've got text messages from the party that had the direct conversation with the alleged teacher about the incident, confirming that it's being worked upon and it's being looked at, but yet no one ever came forward with the names. I've got information that Mr. Diaz was involved, and he gave exoneration to this individual, this employee of yours, so that they wouldn't be fired, because I guess they were getting close to retirement and didn't want to divulge who the victim was. So if this is all true, I would like an explanation from this board and from this community as to how we can allow not only a victim student to still be out there, but if this is all true and not some hoax or some made-up political scheme, how we can allow a perpetrator, a sexual assaulter, to roam free amongst our students? Because we have gotten no answers to this incident. I've asked questions about an incident that occurred at McNair, back when we were discussing and dealing with kids who liked to think they were alternative animals. And when I put in my public records requests asking if there were OSHA reports, incidents, reports of this feces that a student saw not once but twice in the hallways at McNair, I was told nothing existed. So, are you calling me a liar? Because in my 66 years of being an educated adult, I don't usually, you know, go down those roads with such tall tales. What I want to know is, if this student, who I have complete confidence in, in telling the truth, told the truth, why isn't there any documentation?
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
Crystal Casey, Gregory Ross, Rebecca McAllenan.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Rindell, I'm here to request respectfully that Brevard Public Schools adhere to Florida Statute 119 and adhere to Florida Statute 1002.22. There are a couple of people sitting up here on this board that I'm not going to specifically name right now, that are involved in noncompliance with Florida statutes. Just waiting for the nonverbal so that we can catch that on the camera. So as everybody knows, there is an ongoing lawsuit with public records, and we don't need to name the names because I think everybody here knows who we're talking about. I'm hoping that we'll get an update tonight on the status of that lawsuit, because it deals directly with violations pursuant to Florida sunshine or statute 119. So, I would like to implore this board to follow the law. I'm just an average citizen, asking for Brevard Public Schools and their employees to follow Florida Statute 119 and follow Florida Statute 1002.22. From here into the near future, as long as you hold your position, you still have to follow the law. No one is above the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
Gregory Ross, Rebecca McAllenan, and Julie Mantion.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity for public comment. Don't worry, Ms. Casey, I'll name names. Mr. Trent, let's start with your lack of ethics. Can you tell us all what was in the handwritten note you passed to Ms. Wright at approximately 10:10 a.m. at the March 12th school board meeting? Before you claim ignorance on the note, I filed a public records request for a copy of that note and copied you and Ms. Wright on it on that very day, so I know you're aware of the request. It has now been more than a week, and I have not received a copy of that note as required by law. Can you clarify, clarify what the delay is in providing that note? Does it contain a sunshine law violation? Does it contain more of your name-calling of the public and taxpayers? Perhaps Mr. Gibbs can give you some training that all written communications during a school board meeting between school board members are public records. Speaking of violations of law, Mr. Susan, what is your delay in producing the public records requested by Ms. Jenkins? The phone call records she has had to sue you to produce at a cost of $100,000 to Brevard taxpayers? $100,000 that could have been avoided if you would just produce those records as required by law. You admitted in court documents that you used your personal cellphone to discuss board-related business with County Commissioner Tobia, the sheriff's office, the Florida Department of Education, and Randy Fine. Unsurprisingly, Randy Fine illegally spent 10K of PAC money to avoid the summons for a lawsuit.
Mr. Ross, can you please refrain from using people's names? Thank you.
Maybe he was looking under his desk for loose change to pay his lawyer. Anyway, I'm not sure why you do not want to disclose those phone records, Mr. Susan. Perhaps you were discussing ways to remove Ms. Jenkins from her District III seat and for Mr. John Thomas to be relocated into District III. Just a little good old boy political corruption, right?
Can you please refrain from using names, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, this is the type of corruption that we've been pointing out to you for more than a year. We had hoped you would show courage and speak out publicly on the corruption of your fellow board members. At the very least, please stop enabling their corruption and unethical behavior. For example, you don't need to present a motion to ban age-appropriate books. You can rest assured that Mr. Trent will pass a motion to ban every book that doesn't meet his small world view, a small world view held by the majority of this board, a view that is costing the Brevard taxpayers $1.2 million a year to implement your book banning policies. Or we could just use a free and low-maintenance opt-out form, as we did for decades. But you just have to win them their culture wars, don't you, Mr. Trent? Speaking of culture wars, Mr. Susan and Ms. Wright, I listened with interest at the March 12th school board meeting as you desperately tried to paint the public commenters at the school board meeting as being the victims of misinformation. The only misinformation is that you guys are somehow qualified to be school board members. That's the misinformation that's out there. Brevard Public Schools deserves better.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Who's our next speaker?
Rebecca McAllenan, Julie Mantion, and Sarah Mersky.
As was said earlier, thank you for the opportunity to share public comments tonight. As usual, I want to talk about books. I realize there are no decisions that are being made tonight, but as a reminder, I've attended almost all the book review committee's meetings and/or watched them, as well as these board meetings and work sessions. On all the decisions that are made about books from the dais, the common excuse for removal is always the statutes, the statutes. So my question to you is, how much flexibility do you have as a local board? Your policy states that families can opt out, yet you never offer that or personally support that. Tonight, I've actually brought some copies of the opt-out form for you guys when I'll show them to you, because I have questions about them. It was really, really hard to watch the discussion about The Nowhere Girls. The statute was worn like some kind of cloak, religious cloak, religious cloak, where other books were deemed age-appropriate that also had sexual content. I think the most disturbing part for me was all the inclusion in your comments of me and my, and as if your, your parental needs are more valuable because you're sitting up there, and that's incorrect. As a, as a board member, your job is to follow the statute, not your personal needs. It's not a PTA. The rules and policies exist based on your votes and your responsibility to the statutes and how you interpret them, and those votes should be based on those policies and the best outcome for all the students. To that end, I would further suggest that this form be revisited, because it is performative at best and useless at worst. It does not, it's an all-or-nothing. It doesn't allow a parent to decide by book, genre, subject matter. It doesn't have dates on it. It's really just, just performative. So I don't understand it, and maybe someone can explain that to me. And last thing I would like to say about that is, when you say, I would never want my child to read this with such magnanimous emotion, that's really insulting to the people who are okay with their kids reading it. And that's your parental right as a parent to opt out. But it's not fair for you to just put your personal beliefs about what you feel is important and what they should be reading. A book like The Nowhere Girls is such an important book. And the last thing, that's, and it's too late, the last thing, it might be, it might be too late. At the last meeting, there were 100 and some policies. Would it be possible to name what those policies are as you're spouting them off instead of a race to move, move to approve and yell "aye" when it's something that's really great that you want that's offensive to other people? When the discussion is going on and the numbers of the policies, it's impossible, the transparency is impossible to follow 100 policies in one meeting when it's only by numbers. Would it be possible to say, the Tylenol amendment, or whatever, and, and kind of tone down the, you know, the rushing and the, it's really, it's not, it's not-
Thank you.
Julie Mantion, Sarah Mersky, Amy Raub.
Thank you for public comments. Much of what I have to say today is after having viewed the discussion on Nowhere Girls, and I want to address some of those. And I guess I want to start by acknowledging that we are indeed in a very tumultuous time of these culture wars, and I am sympathetic in how you want, you see your role as balancing, or hopefully balancing, your personal values with the mission of Brevard Public Schools. I actually spent a little time on the internet today trying to find the mission, and I couldn't, so I'm very happy to see it right there. To serve every student with excellence as the standard. As I've mentioned in these meetings before, libraries have kind of been the way of education for thousands of years, and I would like to think we all want an excellent library. And I, and I guess I just want to emphasize the point that an excellent library has a diversity of viewpoints. I agree with my friends, a library is not to say, this is the one book that's going to say what we feel about these issues. A library is about providing as many voices as possible so that we can have our students be educated. I also realized, I want to thank you, Matt Susan, when you brought up space. I am a very proud Brevard County resident with NASA, and I'm also a person who deeply loves mythology and classicism. And when I think about Apollo and Artemis, I think you guys, many of us, really kind of, I, I, are too protective of children and don't realize, like, the stories, Apollo tried to rape Daphne, Artemis killed someone who saw her naked. These are stories that little children have, and I'm not saying we should, but this idea that children have never had stories with adult content, the very names of the rockets that we proudly, with tax dollars, send into space are named after these stories. I just want to end too by, by thinking of legacy, and I'm sympathetic of what y'all's legacy is going to be. I mean, there will one day be a museum that will talk about book banning in 2024. And I just, I don't, I want you guys to think the next time you vote to remove a voice, to remove a book from a library, how you're going to be represented in that museum. Because I know there's people during segregation that don't feel good about how they're in museums.
Thank you, Julie.
Sarah Mersky, Amy Raub, Aiden McBaden.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife, mother of two children in BPS, UCF BSW Student of the Year nominee, taxpayer voter. I live in District 2 for school board, and I have a holistic interest in this school district being successful. Tonight, I would like to address the board about the discipline committee meeting in light of National Social Workers Day and the policymaking skills and the peer-reviewed research and evidence-based practice that I and other social workers bring to the table. I was disappointed when the committee chose not to use the information for better behavioral health outcomes. In celebrating National Read Aloud Day, here are things that parents asked me to read aloud to the school board tonight. The definition of the phrase "to get the boot" in Collins Dictionary means "to lose your job." This idiom could also mean someone is dismissed or fired. "To get the boot" could also mean to be voted out, evicted, or made to leave. I propose the latter definition is appropriate for Matt Susan. Parental, parent's opinion is that Matt Susan should be voted out by Brevard citizens in District 4. You may be wondering why Matt Susan should not be reelected. As parents, we have more questions than answers. Does District 4 deserve a school board member that attempts to resolve school issues by actually communicating with parents by email? Does District 4 deserve to receive accurate public records requests, even if those PRRs include an official school board member's email address? Does District 4 deserve to be informed by other school board members or by their school board member when lockdowns occur and families are concerned about their children's safety? Does District 4 deserve to receive factual information about school board members' business affiliations if those affiliations may pose a significant conflict of interest? The answer to all these questions is a resounding yes. District 4 deserves better, and so does Brevard County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Amy Raub, Aiden McBaden, and Debbie Parker.
So, let me see. First of all, Katie, your little speech there about kindness, it's not kind to speak in a little voice that doesn't make you kind, okay? But I can do that for you. It's not kind to waste the book review committee's time. It's not kind to push your superstitions and religions onto our students. That's not kind. It's not kind to sex shame or to make kids, especially girls, feel dirty about their own bodies. And it's really not kind to empower sexual predators, which is what you guys are doing. When you ban books like that. Okay, so I wanted to talk about when you banned, at the end of February, you banned, I missed this meeting, you banned The Nowhere Girls, and that was a glimpse into some really poor parenting styles of Matt, Jean, Megan, Katie, when you banned that book. poor parenting styles of Matt, Jean, Megan, Katie, when you banned that book. I saw how you guys parent and the way you think, and, not good, okay? Jean, when you said, "I don't want to plant those ideas in your 17-year-old boy's head," what I hear is, you have no dialogue with him, and I'm glad. You'd be a terrible person to come to for advice, especially about sex. He sounds wise, and I'm glad he's wiser than you, 17 years old. Do you think that you'd be planting any of those ideas? Like, you're so out of touch. The committee, the committee that you guys totally made up on your own, you removed all of the experts, all of the teachers, the media specialists, you had a hand-pick, hand-picked committee there for yourself, and you stripped them of their power, just, you lied about it, but it was to take away public comment. You had your beautiful little committee, and you still didn't listen to them. You have zero respect for parents. You have zero respect for any of the citizens. They do not agree with you. They do not want the books banned. Stop your little crusade. We're not on, stop banning books. That's not what the public wants. Jean, you have any animal noises you wanted to make? You've got eight seconds, buddy. No?
All right, thank you. Who's the next speaker?
Aiden McFadden, Debbie Parker, and Paul Raub.
Hi, I'm going to make a session. Sorry, I didn't want to lean over the whole time. I'm Aiden McFadden, and I went to Brevard Public Schools my whole public school life, which was my whole school life. And I would just like to say how, when someone, well, when you guys ban a book, go against a decision of a committee, do something stupid that makes me question something, just question what you guys are thinking up there. It just makes me feel really disrespected that we have these kind of people representing our students and making these decisions for our students in this county. And when you, like, when you say things like how my mom said, like, planting ideas in a 17-year-old's head, a 17-year-old is one year away from 18 years old, which is an adult. So, I just don't, it's disrespectful. You know, it's a human that, when you're a 17-year-old person, you have your own thoughts, you've taken in a lot of stuff your whole life, I mean, 17, you're not old, but you know you're not five years old. I just really want to get across that it just really feels disrespectful to, like, it just feels wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's the next speaker?
Debbie Parker, Paul Raub, Liz McCarian.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I speak for myself. Every student, school staff, person, and family in Brevard County of every color, every sector of the economy, every religion and ethnicity, every gender identity, every ability and disability, every mentally healthy and unhealthy person, and any and every other difference you can describe, is affected by the decisions and actions of others. The actions of Brevard schools and this school board will truly make a difference for years and years to come for everyone. Couple of weeks ago, March 11th, there was a settlement reached, and it provides critical protections and clarifications to previously vague laws and rules that developed following the Don't Say Gay law. Now, free expression has been restored. Students and teachers can again speak and write freely about sexual orientation and gender identity in classroom participation and assignments. Also, targeting LGBTQ+ individuals or topics under the guise of this law is explicitly forbidden. Now, this is big. As long as the books aren't being used for classroom instruction, the law does not apply to library books. Other topics should be available for reading in school libraries, too. A few local facts. Did you know that on Christmas Day 1951, the Moores, who are leaders in the civil rights movement, and he was the founder of the first NWACP branch in Brevard County, they were asleep in their bed in their home and were bombed? Both died, one on the way to the hospital and one in the nearest black hospital in Sanford. At that time, the hospital at Titusville would not accept or treat black people. Also, did you know that in January, just a couple months ago, the Harry T. and Harriet V. Moore Voting Rights Act was introduced? It aims to protect voters from the discriminatory voting practices and policies that have been put into place in the past couple of years in Florida. Students must have books available to them in their school libraries that will teach them about their history, all of it, and they can learn from the past, the actual past. And students need to be able to read about reality, not your reality, but theirs. Life in the US has changed and will continue to move on. It's time to embrace our actual future. Every one of us are experiencing changes that are for real. It's time to make a conscious decision and no longer resist and learn to accept. Most importantly, all students, all parents and families must be respected and treated with kindness.
Thank you.
Paul Raub, Liz McCarian, Kelly Kirven.
So, I was going to say thank you for allowing us to speak, but, hmm, heard so much, well, we were out of town, but watched the video later last week about statutes, we're bound by statutes, we can only, it's not us, it's the statutes. We love, you know, books are good, but statutes. And I believe it's statutory that this public comment period has to exist, and I wonder if that ceased to be true, how quickly it would go away. So thanks, statutes. And I say that not completely randomly, because that's part of the fascinating arc of the, what are we called now, the book recommend, I don't know, what are the book review committee, whatever we're called these days, where, you know, this sort of zone of demoralization that I've been caught up in as part of that. Like, if you wanted people to lose interest in being part of this process and quit, I'm not sure how much you would do differently than what's happened, maybe some of it quicker. You might, you know, pull the bait and switch of, there's going to be experts on the committee, and they're going to be listened to, and they're going to have a vote, and then, oops, well, we didn't like those results, let's remove the experts. Wait, oh, wait, let's remove their vote, but no, let's just remove them entirely. Oh, let's replace some of the members, but let's take five months to do it while y'all sit around, and then, oh, I know, let's bring in the person who challenged most of the books that we're reviewing. That'll be hilarious. And then, if they get criticized, let's take another couple months off and, oh, remove public comment, I'm sorry, restructure the committee so that it is merely making recommendations, and therefore, oh, no longer required by statute to receive public comment. It would still be an option, it could still be allowed, but it's not required, so, there it went, interesting. And then, the last full meeting that we had, this committee agreed unanimously to recommend that the Nowhere Girls be kept. And this is not a committee historically that is unanimous on anything, really. There's some huge disagreements in there that we've been very vocal about, and unanimously. But this book that is about, you know, authority, trying to sweep things under the rug and keep everything sweet and keep the uncomfortable things out of the public eye, that got voted down four to one over the, again, I think unprecedented unanimous recommendation of the committee. So, I'm going to keep going. I've been to every meeting so far. I'll continue to come to every meeting, but it's getting harder.
Thank you.
Liz McCarian, Kelly Kirven, and Ava Wolfenkoller.
Good evening. Liz McCarian, Titusville, I am the founder of the national organization Stop Moms for Liberty. I am here to make a suggestion to you board members. I was very pleased to see you approve a proclamation on kindness. Kudos. Weren't those children great and so well-behaved? Oh, my goodness. Just a little tip, you can move an agenda item when you see children sitting out here. You could have made a motion. Do better. So, how about if you start modeling kindness as a body? Board behavior has declined dramatically over the last couple of years, and I, mind you, that I've been involved in Brevard Schools longer than, hmm, all of you. Of course, I have seen some attacking-type comments at this podium, but you know what? People are angry. You're being paid with taxpayer dollars to sit there and pay attention. It's what you need to do. So let's talk about that behavior. Some examples, stating that you are only here to serve conservatives, unkind. Refusing to look at community members, like Mr. Trent is doing right now, when community members come to this microphone, unkind. Leaving the dais when your community members are speaking, unkind. Making facial expressions that are dismissive, even to BPS students, unkind, folks. Grabbing and eating snacks and having your whatever beverages and whatever cups you choose to use in front of a group that sits here just as long, with no chance for them having snacks. I used to tell my kids, "If you don't have enough for everyone, don't eat in front of other people." So making rude comments, let's talk about that. Oh, boy, here we go. Get ready, Megan. Or meowing at your constituents, all unkind. I would never have allowed my five-year-olds at BPS to talk under their breath negatively about others the way that a couple of you have done. If five-year-olds can act that respectfully, so can you. So, for all of our sakes, please turn off those hot mics, because you're really embarrassing yourselves and this community. The chair needs to start controlling the meetings, please. Dislaid behavior by these board members is not acceptable, and the community is watching. So, hot mics off, start looking at the people that are speaking. Mr. Trent, I'm here.
So, in my opinion, it's unfair.
Thank you, Ms. McCarian. All right. Next speaker?
Kelly Kirven, followed by Ava Wolfenkoller.
Yeah, but, one more, two more.
When speaking with a crisis PR consultant, you all use words like "a joke," "chaotic," and "self-serving" to describe how you thought the public felt about the Brevard School Board. After the last meeting, I think those words are too kind. Eyewitness Matt uttered the words, quote, "Get ready, Megan," under his breath when a friend of mine came to speak, and then Jean Trent responded by catcalling her. Just so we are clear, what Jean Trent did is called sexual harassment. Last year, Jean Trent made a bold statement when discussing the funding for Loving Guidance. He said, quote, "We didn't have safe spaces growing up, and we turned out fine," unquote. But did you? Good men. Men with emotional maturity and empathy don't sexually harass women. They aren't intimidated by strong women. They don't belittle female students, and they certainly don't get barred from teaching in their own school district for lying about being arrested because they got into a drunken bar fight. Of course not to be outdone, Matt Susan replied under his breath with, quote, "Actually, it hasn't," when a public speaker said that religion has been handled well in our school system. Would you care to expand on that, Matt? Or explain why you were pandering to an extremist minority that would like to bring America back to the days of the Mayflower? Who's co-founder of the local chapter openly admitted that she doesn't believe teenage girls should bother attending high school because their only future is becoming a traditional housewife? I can only speak for me and my daughters, but I'm raising them in a house where they understand they have a voice and a choice in their future. Pandering to religious extremists who are actively working to indoctrinate our students into harmful ideologies and false Christian teachings are dangerous. Next, I am calling for the end of the Book Reconsideration Committee. The public is tired of being lied to about the good governance Megan claims this board is doing. It's time for this board to own up to your own bias, read the books yourselves, discuss them, and cast your vote. This recommendation will save BPS time, resources, and money. We have wasted millions of dollars in the pursuit of book banning that frankly could be used in a multitude of other places, like teacher and staff pay, trainings, and intervention tools to close achievement gaps. And I know both Megan and Katie will hit back with statements like, and I quote, "The statute says the school board can blah, blah, blah," and I'm not arguing that you can't control the policy. I'm saying that you are neither qualified nor intelligent enough to do it. The policy has been rewritten time and time again, and it continues to get worse with each rewrite, so just end it. And Megan, I've got to ask, is your committee members still even talking to you about the hateful things you said about the Nowhere Girls? She bravely shared her story about her experience with sexual harassment and grooming at the hands of a teacher as a BPS student. You respond by calling the book trash and stating you wouldn't give it to anybody to read. Using hateful and unprofessional rhetoric, to me, is one thing, but that was your friend. Did you even think about that before you openly disrespected her voice and her choice? And then you went on to claim that you were going to find a replacement book? Once again, please stop. You can't even effectively run a meeting. The last thing you need to be in charge of is picking my children's library books.
Thank you, Ms. Kirven.
Ava Wolfenkoller.
Hi, I'm Ava. I just wanted to come up here and say that, well, I started a new book last night, but I wanted to say that if I read you parts of it, you would ban it. And maybe it's not something you would be interested in, but shouldn't you be proud of me for reading? Isn't that the important part, my education? And I'm so grateful that I'm lucky enough to have access to this kind of literature, unlike so many of your students. So it would be kind of you to keep them in mind. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Board, you good to keep going?
I'm good.
Everyone's okay? No one needs a restroom break?
That's all.
All right. We are not the consent agenda. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are 26 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Rendell. Does any board member wish to pull any of the items? I wish to pull F-22 for discussion. Any others? All right, can, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Just mine that I pulled? I'm not discussing this one now, we're voting on these and then going back to that one. Okay. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right. The item that I pulled for discussion, F-22, has to do with supplements to separate-day school, and, Board, I pull in this one just to ask a quick question, because there's a dollar amount tied to this, and I don't know that that was what we agreed upon, and so I would just like the board to weigh in on this discussion and decision.
Motion and a second.
Sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All right, discussion, there it is. I apologize. So the, if you've pulled a side of up and you look at it, it's based on a supplement to Gardendale, what, separate-day school, which is our most difficult school, by all means. And I don't, I want to hear from the board on what their consensus is in regards to the dollar amount for the supplement. I know this is what we had done last year, but I thought that the board had a discussion about increasing it, and I could be totally off here, so I just want to have a conversation.
Yeah, from my memory, this is the dollar amount that was agreed upon, because I had said, I wish this would be higher, I don't think it's high enough, but this is what the majority of the board supported in that meeting.
Okay.
I do remember this being the dollar amount. I think the priority that we said to staff was, we need to go ahead and get it handled before the transfer window opens, which is about to happen. So this- So, this is perfect timing, so that the people who are there would know they're going to continue to have that stipend or supplement, rather, and then the people who are interested in transferring in will know what they're coming into. So, I, to me, this is exactly, you know, we want to make sure we continue on with what we're having, and making sure that it's done in a way so that, I think, the way it was written out in this agenda item, so that it's prorated, so if they, even if they teach a part of the year, that everybody's going to get a part based on how long they serve at that school.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Campbell, I, Mr. Susan, do you have anything to weigh in on this, or Mr. Trent?
No, I'll wait for you to lay out what it is that you were...
All right. I know this one's, this could be a starting point, and I know we're trying to get this and get this in place before we open the window up. I just, again, I feel like this supplement needs to be increased based on the work that they are doing at this school. And anybody that goes to that school cannot argue with that, I don't think. So, if this is the will of the board to start here, that's fine, but I think when it comes time that we have the discussion again about maybe additional supplements, we need to look at increasing this one. Go ahead, Mr. Trent, you, sorry.
I can't argue with the point that the amount of work that they're doing at Gardendale. I know that was the numbers we talked about, I remember, Ms. Jenkins said, I wish it was more. My thought at the time was, if we're going to give Gardendale teachers more, we need to talk maybe about the ALC teachers and try to get them into the picture. But I do remember the five here, and that's, I'm fine with that.
All right. So, then, we'll go ahead and vote on it.
Can I, I just want to follow up with that, too. Thank you for sparking my memory about Mr. Trent, because then the conversation went down to, you know, we have got VE classrooms, VEB classrooms, pre-K, ESE classrooms, and I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I mean, you know me, I advocated for it, but that's a way bigger conversation. And so, the reason that this was kept at the five was, like Ms. Campbell said, get it through so that these people know that they're going to get it again, anyone going there gets it again. But if we're going to talk about increasing supplements for all of our ESE classrooms, that's a way larger conversation and ticket number that we need to talk about.
Okay. Fair enough. Do you have anything else? Or you turn yours off?
No, she got it.
Okay. All right, Paul, roll call, please.
Can I just say something real quick?
Oh, sorry.
I think, in general, we ran into a situation across the board where we are now in a position, I think we have three board members that were pretty solid on this being the number, right? Agree with, and everybody up here, I don't think it's just one or two agrees that we need to have these higher. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the issue that we have is, is, you know, identifying where in the budget we get it and stuff like that, but prioritizing, because we're in a situation where we're competing, even CTE, you know what I mean, even all of it. It's just, we're in a bad spot when it comes to, and we even just got all the millage money, right? So, I feel like I agree with you a hundred percent that it needs to be more. I think also, Dr. Rendell has looked at possibly doing some innovative things at Gardendale so that there may not be the need like it is right now. So, there's, probably during budget time, we can make those decisions, but I agree with you guys. Thank you.
All right, fair enough. Any other discussion in regards to this? No? All right, Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right, Dr. Rendell, will you please let us know about the items under the action portion of the agenda this evening?
Thank you, ma'am chair, the first item is H-42 procurement solicitations.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
Dr. Rendell?
The last item is H-43 Orion Charter School recommendation.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Can we clarify, move to approve the denial of this application?
Yeah, the recommendation is to deny the application for Orion Charter School to open next year.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul, roll call, please.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Trent?
Aye.
Mr. Susan?
Aye.
All right, we will move on to the information agenda, which includes one item for the board to review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on this item today. Does any board member wish to discuss this item?
I do. We mentioned it last week when we were going through all of the line items of the Code of Conduct, but I wanted to thank again Ms. Dampier, Mr. Reed, all of the staff, all the community members who came out, and stakeholders, other stakeholders, our representatives, BFT representatives, we just had a really good group, and I, Ms. Dampier, that was her leadership to do it this way this year. And so, this revised Code of Conduct really is a good reflection of a diverse group of people who came together to have those conversations, and really, they got in everything they could cram in of the decisions that were fit within state definitions and board policy, so, and even, you know, challenged us to change some policies. So, thank you for getting that done in such a timely fashion, and I think once we have gone through this process, then from this point on, every year, it should get easier and easier, right? That's the goal. That's the goal. So, thank you, guys.
All right, any other further discussion on this topic? No? All right, we are now at, oop, Ms. Jenkins, no, you're not touched. Okay, sorry, I saw you grab.
No, no, no.
Okay, we're now at the board member reports. Does any board member have any further things to report or discuss? Mr. Susan, you do. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, in the three schools that I went to, we're seeing a lot of Roy Allen in regards to permission slips, right? So, at Roy Allen, they have a Bob book, it's about this tall, and it says, big old binder, and inside of it, it has all of the permission slips that they've requested. Part of the permission slips that they've requested are, they've got, like, if they want to have a field day, they have to send home permission slips, stuff that's been going on for twenty, thirty years. And one of the issues we have is, is that we have some schools that are very affluent that have a career, a base of volunteers that chase after the kids on days like that, that call them and say, hey, want to let you know Johnny didn't turn in his permission slip and stuff like that. And then you have another, you have, but in the Title I schools, it's very difficult because they don't have the support to chase down some of that stuff. I'm going to, just as an FYI, I'm going to work with Paul to see if there's an opportunity to allow certain ones of those to be allowed by the principal or the superintendent, to allow that, hey, if you're going to have a field day, you're going to do something that's during the school hours, that has, that is based on, you know what I mean, part of the school that it's been doing forever, that having kids sit in a room because their parents weren't able to fill out the form, I just, it's difficult. So, I'm going to look at that permission slip framework and see if there's some of those that we're able to allow, kid, you know, classroom teachers who are having, you know what I mean, something inside their classroom, have to have permission forms for it, right? And there is a reason for that, and I do know what that is. But I don't think the intent of what they were trying to do is applying to that. So, I'm just going to look at it, just an FYI, and then I might bring it back. So, if you guys want to, when you guys are inside your schools, kind of mention to them, say, hey, how's the permission form thing going? What's going on there? And then, maybe bring that back when we come back in two weeks. That's all. All right?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Susan, any other further discussion or reports?
No.
Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.